It's six o'clock and I'll call this regular scheduled meeting of Town Council to order. And you know what, before I start, I think we need to just talk about what happened yesterday in the town of Bridgewater. And I want to start by thanking not just our fire department, but the ten other fire departments that came without hesitation to the town of Bridgewater to help put out the fire on King Street. I spoke to Chief Nosse this morning and he said they ran like clockwork. Fire departments, Public Works, Public Service Commission, all the departments, different departments of the town, different fire departments in the county, and I believe Queens was even here as well, all worked together like as if they were one. And as a town and on behalf of council and all the residents, I cannot thank those volunteers enough for what they did. That fire in old wooden structures could have been devastating and well beyond the boundaries of the buildings that it was contained to. So just, we cannot thank our fire departments, the men and women that do that job as volunteers, our Public Works, Public Service Commission police, everyone that stepped up. Some of those crews were there fifteen hours, no sleep, probably not too much food, exhausting, wearing gear on their back. So again, just on behalf of the entire community, we cannot thank them enough. So I wanted to get that said before we move on. Does anyone else have anything they want to just add to that? Kind of covers it. Additions or deletions to the agenda? Any additions from anyone? Hearing none, we'll just, through consensus, we'll deem the agenda to be approved. Announcements? Counselor Graves, you want to make an announcement for the whimsical children's store perhaps?
I can, yeah. So the whimsical children's store is still looking for new or gently-used items that a child three to twelve would like to buy as a Christmas present for a parent or loved one. Cheryl and I, with the help of Sandra Doddman, our Director of Recreation, have decided that the cutoff date is the seventeenth of November. We don't have enough stuff by then, we're just going to postpone the event and move it all into the fall of the year. We certainly need some things for that program to continue.
Thank you. Any other announcements from members of council? Counselor Thorburn, did you, what, mention poppy sales or anything that are coming up?
Well, I can, but we've got another council meeting before that. Actually, the first poppy, the Governor General, Lieutenant Governor gets his on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
That's the same day we started a poppy campaign, so I won't be around for any presentations to you mayor this year. Last year, we tried to get the first poppies after Lieutenant Governor received his to the mayors of MODL in the town of Bridgewater. We've been doing that for three or four years as a poppy chair in the pregnant legion. We certainly, all of that money goes back into the community, Health Services Foundation, service officer to help the veterans and families. So I would hope that anybody would buy a poppy, more importantly, wear a poppy, to give the veterans the respect that they deserve. They put their lives on their lines for us and we owe them that much to remember them, remember them well. They served us. Thank you.
Of course, Saturday, November eleventh at the Senate Taff unless it's raining and then there'll be an announcement that it's moved, but...
Right. I'll bring a written announcement in next council meeting in time for November.
I don't think we...
Oh, well, then I won't have to worry about that, will I? Get her done.
Any other announcements from members of council? No? Okay. Sylvie, is that to you?
I think so.
Waterfalls. We have a delegation here. Sylvie LaRocque is here to speak about one of the grants that we have before us this evening. If you would like to come to the podium and speak to us.
So I'll tell you about the story of how that project became, what it is and why I'm asking money to help with that project. In January, one of my employee's daughter, fifteen years old, tried to commit suicide. We're the community center attached to the French school. We do not, we're not owned by the French school. It's like if you put a candy store. We went, rent out a space. The fact that we try to bring services in French for the kids that attend the school and have another place after school to be able to speak more French or to learn more words or to be able to function in French. So my employee's daughter tried to commit suicide. Now, community center, what do you do? I'm there for my community. We deserve children from Chester to Liverpool. So what services can I ask or can I do for my community? So with an idea, I decided to try to do kind of an arts program, which every Monday I found a great karate teacher that comes in free of charge for us and for the kids and teaches them karate. With the school next to us, the music teacher is going to take them on some days to do a little bit of music for them. And on Wednesday, from three to five, they do arts, whatever they feel like doing. So if they want to paint a chair, I'll find a chair. If they want to paint a part of a wall, we'll cut a part of the wall, but not in the school. I'll take something else. And they can do it and they'll do dishes and they'll do sweaters and they'll do caps and whatever they can touch to at least give them a sense that whatever they're doing, they do not have limitation. They can go wherever they want, but just by showing them that they're allowed to do it, it's not because you have anxiety at five or depression at six that means that your life is done and you will never be able to do anything. So I ask of you guys to have a little bit of money to be able to buy the stuff that we need, pen, pencils, crayon, and to help us in trying to keep that program going. Because in June, we'll do an art show. So all the pieces that they'll have done during the year will sell. Five bucks, two bucks. We'll have people in, do it formal, and the money that's going to be brought back to the community center, we're keeping half. And the other half, I want the kids to be able to choose either the shade or to help other program. We'll choose a couple of them so they'll have the sensation of what I did was helping me, but I can help somebody else. So that's the main goal of that program. So if you have any questions, I'm here to, I guess, answer them.
Any questions from members of council? Counselor McGinnis?
So these are challenged kids?
These are kids that have diagnosis of depression, anxiety, TDAH. Twenty point fifty percent of the kids at the French school have problems with mental issues. That's our school. I'm not talking about other schools in Bridgewater. I haven't looked at them. But we're trying to help them and give them tools right now so that when they're in high school or university, they're not stuck without being to do anything and are stopped there because of their limitation. We just want to show them that it doesn't stop you to be whatever, to have depression, you can go very far.
One more. How many kids do you have?
Right now, for our first year, we've got nine children attending.
And they attend how many days a week?
Two days. We do that Monday and Wednesday from three to five.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Sylvie, have you been successful getting funding from other organizations?
Yes.
Someone to help subsidize that budget?
Mm-hmm.
From other municipalities?
No. Heritage Canada helps us right now. You're the first guy I ask because we're closest to you and a lot of our kids are from Bridgewater. But yeah, I've got a list and don't worry, I'll go from Chester to Cape Britain to Quebec if I have to. I don't care, I believe in it, so I'm going for it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Graves?
Are you getting any assistance from School Plus?
School, I'm working with School Plus with the, sheesh, I forgot that word in English, sorry. Two other ladies that are in the school were working together because when kids have problems, I don't want to know what they have. I'm not allowed to see their father in the community center. So I go see School Plus and the two other persons that are resource personnel in the school, they go see the teacher to see would that fit the kid? Would it benefit it? I won't put somebody there for nothing. If it's going to help, we'll go for it. But yeah, they're working with us and they're giving time out to come and help me because when I do that, I'm not paid. I'm doing that because I believe in those kids, so they're just helping me.
Thank you.
In looking at the cost, seven thousand dollars is a huge ask. It's an expensive program.
To start, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm starting from scratch. Paint, brushes, paper, any type of paint, any type of wooden stuff. It's the first year that's going to be a lot, but I'm still going to have paint next year and I'm still going to have pencils and I'm still going to have paper. It's the starting bunch that is a lot. I know seven thousand is a whole lot, but that's what it's costing me. Am I asking for seven thousand? If you guys have it and want to share, let's go. But I'm asking for help to be able to continue the program.
Any other questions from members of council? Thank you for coming in. I think it's important when we're, we have this later on our agenda, but the information that you provided, I think, was really good and informative to have when we go to make our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, the next item is the October tenth, two thousand seventeen, regular Town Council minutes. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, we will deem those as approved. Planning items, public hearing. I have my cheat sheet in front of me because it's always a little different. So it's public hearing, application for development agreement, use of property as beverage room and lounge for Ferkenstein Brewery. It's Ferkenstein, right?
Oh, yes.
Got that right. That's between Ferkenstein and Ferkenstein. So it's Ferkenstein at six seventy-three King Street. And so that is the agenda and rules of conduct. I don't have the rules, so just behave yourselves. And just remind that council's decision is governed by the municipal planning strategy. So I'll turn this over to our Director of Planning.
Thank you.
Who will lead us through this.
Yes, I forgot to turn on the projector, so it's fairly straightforward. So I think I'll just do it from here rather than as a presentation. But the statutory requirements were submitted to you. Everything has been met. So this is a request for a development agreement to enable a beverage room and lounge license at six seventy-three King Street. So that is the, wow, I think most of you around the table know where Ferkenstein is, along with Trade Winds across from the Cummings Building, so just between Empire and Dominion. The applicant is the business, Ferkenstein Brewing. The property is owned by the DeVos and they were, they co-signed the application. It's mixed-use downtown neighborhood with commercial and residential uses and there's ample parking in there. It's adjacent to the farmer's market parking lot. The proposal has no external changes to the existing structure. The current use is as a microbrewery that is permitted as of right. So this, in order to have a beverage room and lounge license or lounge use added to this, our planning documents require, land use by law rather, requires a development agreement to enable this new liquor license. So it is zoned historic downtown commercial and our planning strategy does enable this type of development agreement. So there was a public participation meeting on September thirteenth. On September twenty-fifth, there was, sorry, no members attended, the public attended that meeting. First reading, the document of the development agreement was, you gave that first reading on September twenty-fifth. As staff, we didn't receive any verbal or written comments about the application. It was noted, the notice was circulated in the newspaper. And really, it is a single-issue development agreement, just dealing with the use, which is simply to enable the beverage room and lounge use in the suite occupied by Ferkenstein. And that's pretty much all that the development agreement has to say. If there's any changes required, so if they wanted to expand or they wanted to move into a new suite, it would require a new development agreement process.
Any questions from members of council? No? Counselor Thorburn?
Yes, is the development agreement good for one year now? Is it...
Oh, no. The development agreement is good. It runs with the land and...
How long do you have to act on it once we...
Oh, sorry, yes. There's, I believe, I said it's twelve, there's a time to execute the development agreement, which means that both parties sign it. So Ferkenstein would sign and the town would sign to enable the development agreement. So Ferkenstein needs this development agreement executed in order for them to have documentation that they meet all the requirements of the permitting processes of the town so they can complete their application with the province of Nova Scotia for their beverage room and lounge license. And that would enable the change of licensing under the alcohol and gaming regulations.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any comments by the developer?
I have no comments unless there's questions to ask.
Any questions?
No.
No?
Cheers.
All right, I don't have anything to add. It's pretty straightforward. Another growing business in our downtown core, so...
Would you like to have a motion here, or...
I would like to have a motion, please.
I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater into, enter into a development agreement regarding the property located at six seventy-three King Street in a manner similar to the draft development agreement dated October twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. The mayor and chief administrative officer are hereby authorized to execute this agreement only within the time period described in the development agreement. Should the document not be signed within this time period, council shall consider and request to sign the development agreement as a new application or follow the entire process required by the municipal government act.
Have a second there, please. Counselor Thorburn, any further discussion? Hearing none, you ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We don't get much clapping anymore. Our next item is correspondence for information. Just a letter from Chris Johnson, Sandra Mailman, regarding banners in the downtown. And this is an item that comes up later on in our agenda, but they had a couple of concerns that we've forwarded to staff and so this letter is just here for your information. Anything for correspondence for action, reports and recommendations, shared service proposal, building official services. So is, do we have an overview for the public or do you want me just to kind of run through that? Nobody has a presentation on this? Sure, would you like to?
Sure.
Fantastic. Let me help you. No pressure.
Through the mayor to council. The report in front of you is with respect to counsel of the town of Bridgewater considering a recommendation to move towards working on a memorandum of understanding with our neighboring municipal units with respect to sharing building official services for building inspections, fire inspections, and dangers and unsightly services. The matter generally has risen over the last couple of years with some challenges in staffing building officials in other units and some movements around. And town of Bridgewater has been gracious in providing reciprocal services on an informal basis in the past. So if someone has a gap and is in trouble, we've often helped them out. There's been a request to look at, should we do this, in a shared services model going forward? And as per the report, the total budget for all of the municipal units on, that would be considered, is about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars consolidating the budgets of those in the long term towards a shared services model, which would result in the long term of the sharing of staff from the municipality of the District of Chester, municipality of the District of Lunenburg, and town of Bridgewater to provide building services to all five municipal units in Lunenburg County. So that would also include Mahone Bay and town of Lunenburg. It would also result in the harmonization of policy bylaws and service delivery through the county so that service standards were the same. So the proposed soul that's been put forward to all councils is to take a two-phased approach. The first phase would maintain staff within their current municipal units and working towards some of the IT and service standard harmonization. And the second phase would move staff to a consolidated regional unit within a host employer. There are advantages and disadvantages to the proposal. Advantages include reducing long-term staffing risk, potential for optimal utilization of various levels of staff, succession planning, uniform processes, and uniform code application. There's also challenges, potential decrease in service level, assignment of non-building official duties that current staff performs such as service to Remo, and the funding model may not be perfectly balanced. So as such, you have before you a report with a variety of options and motions to consider before you.
Thank you. I'd like to have the discussion before we put the motion on the floor, if you don't mind. So I'll open up the floor to discussion for members of council. As we've heard from the CAO, this is a proposal in front of us to enter into an intermunicipal partnership. And so this is kind of a big ticket item, so I'd like to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak. And if someone would like to start us off, if anyone has anything to say.
Yes, your worship. I'll start us off.
There you go.
I have plenty to say, but I'll limit it to some degree. Not a huge fan, we don't have a motion on the floor, obviously, but I'm not a huge fan of forming another shared services organization or group or whatever you want to call it. We currently have one with the town of Mahone Bay, town of Bridgewater, and the municipality of the District of Lunenburg. And that's been very successful in operating our waste site at Huayna Settlement and has been very successfully setting up an IT program for those three units. So successful, now selling that service to other units and other entities on the South Shore. That's a model that I personally would like to see us stay with. I'd like to see us stay, you know, sharing services in the interim and having the municipal joint service board, which is in place right now, ready to roll. Matter of fact, I think we're ready to roll on it probably a year, year and a half ago. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Tanick probably could know a little bit more about that because he was involved in the shared services committee on that organization. So that's where I'm at with this, unless someone else can convince me there's a better way. I want to decrease bureaucracy, I don't want to increase it.
I feel like you were reading my notes or...
I haven't been reading your notes.
Counselor McDonald?
I'm all for shared services and especially when they can enhance the level of service or save in the cost. I don't see this enhancing the level of service for the town of Bridgewater or reducing costs. I think will actually reduce the level of service and cost us more money, both upfront and long term. We have, we have a process in the municipal joint services board that has been tried, tweaked, tested, and proven itself quite effective. I understand that some of the municipal units are not as familiar with it and may not have the same level of confidence that some of us have the benefit of. But sidestepping it, put me a little bit, you know, a little bit on edge about why that would happen, why we would sidestep that process. I think that we have an extremely level, extremely high level of service in the town of Bridgewater. I'm very proud of that and very proud to be able to tell potential developers and people who've shown interest in the town of Bridgewater that we are there to work with them and that we are fast, that we respond to their needs and that they will get the service that they deserve. And I think they appreciate that. I think it's very important as part of our economic development strategies moving forward. And I think it's very important to have a level of flexibility with these types of services, to be able to react to the times and the needs and situations that we're facing in the town of Bridgewater. And this is, so this is a service that, the process that's been laid out, I see it very much as trying something and then making changes as we go, whereas municipal joint services board tends to study the heck out of things, find all the options, the best possible routes, and then try it from there. I, and I'm really big on understanding things before I jump in and I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the jump in route. So for all of those reasons, I'm very proud of the level of service that we offer in the town of Bridgewater now and I'm happy to stay with it unless there's an opportunity to save money and enhance the service in the future.
Thank you. Further comments by members of council?
Counselor Graves? So I think in Lunenburg County, it's a pretty big sandbox, not that many people playing. And I think, looking forward five years or ten years from now, I think that we've really got to start working, working together. I think this is just one way of doing that. The motion, the first motion that's presented is, there's lots of exit points and obviously we're not going to do something that's going to interfere with the town of Bridgewater or we're not going to have others, we're not going to decrease the level of service to meet others. The hope really is that others will increase their level of service to meet what the town of Bridgewater is currently doing. Right now, things are good in terms of staffing, but that could change tomorrow. It could change next week. And if you're not prepared, I think this just provides, provides better and longer term coverage. In the past, as I understand it, the town of Bridgewater has taken services from the other planning, planning people, or sorry, inspection people. But conversely, we've also taken service from them. Like we've borrowed service from them. We've given them service, but we've also taken their service when we need it. I don't think there's anything wrong with kicking the tires, seeing what's out there, seeing how it all shakes out. And if we don't like it, at the end of the day, we can just say no. To Counselor McGinnis's point, I do think it should be with the municipal joint services board. That's what it's there for and I think that we, why create another level of bureaucracy? And I think that we could push it that way, but even by going, using the first motion as an example, we could push for the municipal joint service boards. And if it doesn't work out, then we can just back off. So there's lots of exit points. So and it's worth, I think it's doing due diligence to find out, to find out how it will work out.
Thank you, Counselor Graves. Further discussion, Counselor Thorburn and then Counselor Fergier.
Well, I agree with most of the comments here tonight, but we were quite fortunate to bring the town of Lunenburg into Remo a couple of years ago and it works well and that encompasses all of Lunenburg County. And I guess you've seen last night how the fire service works. It encompasses all of Lunenburg County and works very well where they're at. But where we have an organization set up for shared services, I just don't see why it's not used. That's why we set it up and it's there and it should be used. And it'd be nice to have all the departments working off the same information and the same process to make it simpler for all the developers that comes to Bridgewater, MODL, Chester, Mahone Bay, Lunenburg. I think that's great. But I think if we don't control that it goes to the joint service board, then we just have another board out there that's running around in another circle somewheres, but that's where I stand on doing it.
Thank you. Counselor Fergier?
Yes, thank you. Initially, I was, I tried to be open-minded and look very, tried to see both sides of things. And initially, I was thinking like Counselor Graves and that we could have some exit points in moving forward with the motion. But having, having reviewed and hearing other counselors, I'm kind of in, in the side of, we do have the municipal joint service board here, looking at some things such as cost. I know it's not always the bottom line, but in this case, costs will not decrease. If anything, they may increase. Also, services to Bridgewater area can be impacted. So I look at those as kind of flags, but also that we also have the model here to move forward on. So I, I'm not in favor of going forward with the motion, I guess, as initially I was.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner? Would you like to speak?
I'm probably going to paraphrase everything that was said previously. I certainly am in favor of shared services, especially if it saves taxpayers some money, if it makes the town of Bridgewater some money, or if it delivers the same amount of service that we already have to our residents and taxpayers. So, you know, I do feel that this should be explored through the municipal joint services board first. You know, we have a mechanism within that board to invite other municipalities in, to sell services to those municipalities. So it wouldn't be a huge stretch to explore the service exactly the same way that it's been presented to us, to explore it, see if it would work, and invite those other two municipalities that aren't part of joint services in to explore it with us. Otherwise, if we were to get down this path, we may as well give our notice to the joint services board and call it quits. So that's where I am with this, frankly.
Thank you. I don't normally write down my thoughts. I try to wing it, but I do recognize that we're talking about other municipal units here. So I'm sensitive to, well, I'm sensitive how I can come across sometimes, so I wrote this down to make sure that there's no confusion. Because on the surface, it may seem counterproductive at a time where municipalities are needing to join together to save money to not support a joint municipal, municipal partnership for building inspection services. On any issue that comes before council, we need to think first about our people, our residential and commercial taxpayers, our developers today, and those looking to develop in the future. We need to look at the economic impact, as well as the level of service to our community. The town of Bridgewater is growing, and this is not a new story, but growth is fueling growth. The town of Bridgewater also currently has two building inspectors. Why? Because we need two building inspectors. They're busy, they're good at their job, and the feedback we hear constantly from developers, time and time again, is that our staff make developing in town a smooth and easy process. This has been going on for decades, we hear this constantly. We do however know that not all our municipal neighbors have building inspectors on staff, and not supporting this joint municipal partnership isn't to deny them services or hold them back. Am I throwing you off? There are a few things that, there are a few things that drive me as crazy as unnecessary bureaucracy. And I feel that in this case, this is not only adding a layer, but complicating what is already a streamlined process in Bridgewater. I don't dispute that there are needs outside our town, but we currently have in place two mechanisms to address this issue with our partners. The first is that we do inspection services for them when they need help, with an agreement already in place. And the second is that part of the municipal joint services board's role is to evaluate services that can be shared in a more cost-effective way, while delivering a level of service our constituents have come to expect. And to create something outside of those two existing platforms is what I see as counterproductive. It's my belief that the proposal before us would increase costs to the town of Bridgewater while reducing the level of service to our town. And just one of those reasons alone is a red flag for me, but both leaves me wondering, as simple as it may sound, what's in it for us? Why would we create more bureaucracy, increase our costs, and reduce our level of service to our people? The town of Bridgewater is booming, and town councils, past and present, have worked hard to set this town up for success. That hard work is paying off, and has left us in the enviable position in Nova Scotia. My lack of support for the proposal before us is not to punish our neighbors, since nobody wants to punish our neighbors or hold them back. I would like to see us continue with the agreement we have in place, offering our services when needed, while referring this service to the M G S B for a detailed analysis and review. And this is how we can ensure we deliver a high standard and cost-effective service to our town. It's how we deliver responsible government to our community, it's what our constituents expect of us, and I think it's what we expect of each other. And I'll just piggyback onto what Deputy Mayor Tanner said. If we don't start adding services to the M G S B soon, then we need to really consider why do we have it in the first place? The two services we've added have delivered excellent results, to Counselor McGinnis's point. We have other municipal units that are looking to buy our I T services because of the way they're delivered. And I don't have the dollar figure off the top of my head, I'm sure Counselor McGinnis does, but the number of, the amount of money that we've saved by having our solid waste facility run through the M G S B is staggering.
In excess of $250,000 a year.
A year. So for me, and again, I want to be very aware of the sensitivity, and I don't want our neighbors to think this is us trying to hold them back, or we don't want to play in the sandbox, to Counselor Graves's point. But I also think, we already have a sandbox built, and we have people that, they don't want to use it. But it's already built, it's already there. So for me, I can't support the, what is the recommended motion. I'm further to the bottom of that page. Is there any other discussion, or is someone willing to put a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that Town Council of town of Bridgewater, one, support the continuation of reciprocal building official service delivery on a charitable basis, including hourly fee and money's charge, and two, refer the proposed concept of a shared building official service to a municipal joint service board.
Do I have a second there? Counselor Thorburn, did you want to speak to that?
No, I said all I want to, just to echo what the Deputy Mayor said, and I think you indicated as well. You know, we have a joint service board that has been extremely successful at the two services we've taken on. We've been, for whatever reason, reluctant or whatever to take on other services. And that's something we're going to have to look at. And this is a prime one for us to look at, and I think it's a prime opportunity to do so.
Counsel Thorburn?
I agree, and I agree with your comments, and I think this is the way for us to go. It protects the service that we have, but there's an opportunity to go through the joint service board so it can come back and help all the municipalities as well.
Any further discussion, question? Counsel McDonald?
Just like to, just one further point, that the municipal joint services board ensures that there are no winners or losers as well, which is really important when you're trying to combine services that are slightly different between municipalities, that no one should come out of it a loser, and I think that's a really important factor in referring it to the M S J B.
M G S B.
M G S B. Soon as it came out.
I pause. All right, questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you, that was a great discussion. Our next item is a recommendation of Director of Finance, funding for St. Philip's Street land purchase. We had discussed this a little while back. We just did not choose a source for where those funds were to come from. And Mr. Fina, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the one that's adjacent to the Public Works Garage. So it does provide a, it's a necessary piece of land, it was a good one to purchase. Someone prepared to make a motion for where this money's going to come from? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve funding from the capital reserves for the purchase of 132 St. Philip's Street.
Second there, Counsel McDonald. Any discussion? We are talking $37,000, for those who are wondering how much we're paying for the land.
Just a question, what's going to happen with the building, the building still on the property?
Currently is.
That's going to come down at some point?
We haven't formalized our plans yet.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Region six intermunicipal agreement renewal requested. So Region six is, deals with solid waste, for those who are watching on East Link and YouTube and wondering what that is, Region six. It's not where they keep aliens, that's Area 51, right? Less exciting, but still important. Did, I'm assuming everyone read the document, is there any input that they have? I mean, the changes were in the document? It's pretty straightforward, it's an agreement that's been in place for quite some time.
If I may, your worship, yeah, it's just minor adjustments to the agreement of the Region six group. There are, I think, six or seven regions in the province, and this one goes from Shelburne right up through to West Hans, all includes those municipal units. And so this is the agreement between those units, and it's just some housekeeping more than anything else. It's nothing, nothing significant.
Okay, if anything comes up, please refer your questions to, or your input to, I guess, to the C A O. The C A O will disperse those, thank you. We also have the building inspection report for September in front of you. And if there's any questions, Deputy Mayor Tanner?
At one of our council meetings, I think I'd requested or suggested that, and I'm not sure, direction was given to staff, but to just get a summary, I guess, of some of the things that are happening from month to month, just a quick, here's a permit that was issued for this, and here's why. Oh, yes. So I don't see that on this particular report, and I guess I'd ask why.
Now, so that is on for a future discussion session?
Perfect.
Because I believe the request was not only what kind of types, like you wanted information like decks and things like that, but I think there was questions about addresses and things.
Yeah.
And so it was going to be on a discussion session?
Perfect.
For staff, but yes, it is, it is coming up.
In the mix.
Yes. Any other questions?
I think it's important that we highlight the fact that we have growth. Not every municipal unit in the province have that. Last year at list date, we had seven, approximately $7 million in building permits. We, this year, same period, $11,400,000 approximately. That is significant growth for a town our size. I know, Richard, you were in the city of Halifax, you have a little more than that, but you also came from Queens. And so for a town our size, this here is significant growth, and to your point, which you said earlier, we are a growing town, and we continue to do so for, I think primarily because of the way we handle people when they come to town, to set up a business or to decide to live here. There's a lot of good things happening in this town, and that's the reason why we have that growth.
Counsel Thorburn?
Father of Deputy Mayor's questions, when they give that report, it would be nice to know how much our taxes would be increased by, along with the permit value. You know, if we're going to make so much, permit so much, what's our tax that we receive at the end of the day? If it's $100,000, we get so much tax, if it's $550,000, we get so much. So we could really see how much our revenues are going to increase for the next upcoming budget, almost monthly.
So, yes, we can discuss that further in the discussion session on it, but I'm fairly certain that through P V S C does assessments, so I'm not sure that we could actually commit to what the value of a project's going to do
with our, with our tax rule. But I'll confirm that.
We should be able to come close, if we've got $1 million in taxes, and $600,000 residential, what's our residential rate? And the same thing with the business, what's the business rate? We should be able to come up with some sort of a ballpark number, what we can see as expected revenue for the next year.
We'll look, see what we can pull out from the data to better tell that story.
Yep, great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Great question, thank you. Next item is Public Service Commission Temporary Borrowing Resolution for $956,000 for capital projects. Does anyone want to make that motion, and then?
I will.
Thank you.
I would move, where is the Public Service Commission of Bridgewater? As a body corporate pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 59 of the Statutes of Nova Scotia, 1993. And where is the said Public Service Commission of Bridgewater has resolved to borrow by the issue and sale to ventures the sum of $956,000 for the purposes of water systems? And where is the said Public Service Commission of Bridgewater has requested the town of Bridgewater guarantee the principal and interest of the said debentures when sold pursuant to Section 89 of Municipal Government Act? Be it therefore be, be it therefore resolved that the subject to approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, the town of Bridgewater do guarantee the principal and interest of the debentures of the Public Service Commission of Bridgewater in an amount not exceeding $956,000 when issued and sold, and that the mayor and clerk are authorized to do all things and execute all documents necessary to give effect to this resolution.
Do I have a second, please? Counsel Fergier, any discussion? Any questions? No?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Recommendation of the C A O. Oh, this is your first recommendation of the C A O, congratulations. For installation of Remembrance Day banners. Would you like to, oh, yes.
I'd like to declare conflict of interest and set in a gallery while you're debating this issue. I am first Vice of the Royal Canadian Legion Branch, 24.
Thank you, Counsel Thorburn, appreciate that.
Sure. So through the mayor to council, we received some correspondence with respect to funding challenges with regards to the program where the Royal Canadian Legion branch of Bridgewater raises money doing banners. Upon receipt of that correspondence and discussion with staff and some elected officials, we're bringing forward a recommendation that we will install the banners on behalf of the Royal Canadian Legion for this year at no cost.
Thank you. Any questions of the C A O? Hearing none, would someone like to put a motion on the floor, please?
I'd like to make a motion, your worship. The Council for the town of Bridgewater approved the installation of Remembrance Day 2017 banners at no cost for the Royal Canadian Legion branch of Bridgewater.
Thank you, a second, Counsel Graves, any discussion?
We've got to address the banner issue in total.
Yes, and we can make the public aware that we're going to be addressing the banner issue. Yes, Counsel McDonald?
That was, that was kind of my point, if we were going to look at making it a grant kind of topic so that different organizations using the banners for different purposes were kind of differentiated.
Yeah, we started this discussion at our last discussion session, but we're going to dive deeper into that one, and we recognize we have to come up with some kind of plan. We've got a lot of poles in town that sit empty throughout the year. We've all been to other communities and gone through them and just said, oh, what could we do if we kind of were on the same page? So I think we're going to move forward with that, but, yeah, great. Motion's on the floor, are you ready for the question? Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. While I'm back, Counsel Thorburn? Business arising unfinished business, we have recommendation of the Grants Organizations Committee. So this motion was already on the floor, and basically referred it to tonight. So again, I'll just say the motion is on the floor, if someone would like to make the motion or amend a motion. Counsel McGinnis, I know you, I know you were.
So, yes, your worship, the motion that's on the floor, do you want me to read that?
Okay.
Okay. So the motion that's on the floor, that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of grants to Organizations Committee and award grants for the August intake period as follows. 500 capital grant to Bridgewater Photographic Society, 2,000 capital grant to Lunenburg County Sports Heritage Society, a 200 operating grant to the Red Bear Healing Home Society, and a 500 development grant to the Association de Centres Communetales de la Rivière. So based on some new information that's been brought forward to council, we, well, Counselor McGinnis and myself went back to the Grants to Organization and received some new information. So from that update, we would like to amend the existing motion to, for the 200 operating grant for Red Bear, to amend that. So can we?
To delete that.
To delete that from the existing motion. And the reason for that was that it was not necessarily pertaining to Lunenburg County specifically. So we felt it was more of a provincial than specific to our region, is why the change in that.
Thank you, we have an amended motion, just a kind of a second there for that amendment, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner? So you have an amended motion on the floor, we have our grants intake less the 200 for the Red Bear Healing Home. Yep, so is there any discussion on the amendment? I guess we just vote on that, all those in favor of the amended motion? Amendment, sorry. Those opposed? Okay, so we have a new motion on the floor. Discussion or questions? No? Hearing none. Counsel Graves?
So the capital grant for the Lunenburg County Heritage Society is $2,000. So it's not based on per capita, which it probably should be. There's sports stars are all over Lunenburg County. And they're also asking for, to your point earlier, much earlier, we should kind of be the last people that they ask, and we're pretty close to the front. And I do think that if the community doesn't get it behind it, then we shouldn't have the, have the sports heritage. We shouldn't be doing it. I think if nobody wants it, and they can't raise money locally, and they can't raise money amongst the sports communities, or the business community, then we shouldn't be supporting it, so. And also, the, I think the development grant for the, for nine kids, that program as described, is, $500 is not a lot of money, but it's the principle. And I think it's a lot, it's, you know, what, that original program, $7,000, we'll take what we can get. There are ways that you can run programs for a lot less money and a lot more community engagement, and I just don't think they're doing it.
Thank you for your comments. Other discussion? Or questions? Deputy Mayor Tanner, you look like you have?
I can't remember the exact numbers, but I thought we saw an email that was circulated with regard to the sport heritage group, and there was substantial buy-in already by corporate in the region. And so I would, I would suggest that they're doing their due diligence, and they're doing some hard work to fund that. I had the email in front of me, I could quote perhaps the amounts, but anyway.
Yeah, and just as an update, I think we had this before, there's funding commitments of $1,000 from M O D L, and Chester is actually doing $1,000 as well now, they were originally 500, they're doing, it says here, 16 private businesses and individuals who have been approached to support the initiative. So I don't know what the financial numbers coming back from those are. But they're reaching out, so. reaching out, so.
The only comment I might make, your worship, is I don't totally disagree with Counselor Graves. I do to some degree. The Grants to Organization Committee has a set of parameters they've given to look at grants. We have an application form, application process, we do scoring, and that's how we basically come up with a lot of this. I think we should go back to a drawing board and maybe look at how we give grants to organizations. And that might be a future discussion session that we want to take, take on, because I think it is important that we maybe look at it a little differently than what we have in the past. Because I, as I say, I don't totally disagree with some of the comments he's made, but for these, I think I have to support.
And, and I'm in the same boat. I don't disagree with Counselor Graves. I struggle with grants to organizations most of the time. I think most of us do, whether it's a grant that keeps reappearing, and you just want to say, at some point you have to go seek money elsewhere, or, and you hit the nail on the head. I don't like being first, we shouldn't be the first to be asked. You need the community buy-in, and then you come to council. Because at the end of the day, we are the community. So if the people out there have said, well, we're not really going to support this, then coming to us forces their support. Do you know what I mean? It's the same, it's the same person. So you can't get the money from them, so we're giving you their money. Hearing the delegation today, it, it changed my mind on that one. I was on the fence there. But when I hear about kids that have anxiety, and kids that have depression, and the mental health issues that we have in our community, I mean, I thought the same thing, $7,000, that's, that's, it sounds like a Cadillac of programs, but the ask is, like, our grant is $500. I, I feel like we should have more of these programs in our community, so, again, I'm torn. I'll, I'll be supporting the motion, but I think we also need to revamp, re-look how we do these grants to organizations. And we're doing better than we used to do. Which was, it was almost blind years ago.
But if I just may have one more comment, and this is where, I remember when I first got on council, I was not for having grants to organizations. And for the simple reason being, take the Wall of Fame at the LCLC, and I'm sure they're going to go to local businesses to get funding. Well, guess what? Where do we get our money? From local businesses, and we're going to give. So local businesses are giving twice. That's the type of thing we've got to look at, I think.
Yeah. That's a struggle. Counselor Graves?
So the town of Bridgewater's asked to, to invest $2,000, 8, 8,500 population. MODL is being asked to invest just over $25,000 population, also $2,000. Where's the fairness in that? Do you know what I mean? There are great baseball players and football players and hockey players that are from Barres Corner and Voglers Cove, and other places. And I just think that the town of Bridgewater, using the other model, you know, we would be down to 11, and it's not about the money, to a point. We'd be about $1,200, and, and, you know, other, other smaller communities would be considerably less than their ask, and other larger communities would be paying more than they're being asked. And I think it's, it's a fairer model, so.
No, I don't disagree at all. Counselor Frasier?
And I hear Counselor Graves' concerns, and Counselor McGinnis and I found us asking more questions about these grants than, as he indicated, were actually set out in the template that we were to go by, so we really feel that, I'll just echo the comments, that the, the process needs to be revisited because it's, it's not fitting with the criteria and the questions that counselors are asking at, at the table, so I feel the importance of putting it on as a discussion item, so we can feel comfortable in making our decisions.
Counselor McDonald?
Counselor Graves mentioned kind of the, the equity and the distribution of, of funds based on population, and I think some of that may be an awareness. We just heard that we are the closest municipality to the French School. And, you know, it's just simply not being aware, because most of our residents don't have the same lines and walls and boundaries set up that we do, and certainly probably don't know the population specifically, and, and don't have the same perceptions or understanding or information that we do. So maybe that's information that should be included on the, the grant application in some way, not to throw it in people's faces, that you can only ask us for this percentage, because we only have this percentage of the county's population, but there may be some way of providing some of that perception, or, I don't know what word I'm looking for, but to, to provide that information, so that it's, it's a little more understood when people are asking for money, what they're actually asking us for.
Counselor Thorburn?
The problem that I'm having, I thought that the grants to organization was a one-time ask, and we keep getting asked over and over again, so if we're having them come back year after year for money, for grants, then shouldn't that be set out in an operational grant and be clearly free of the grants to organizations, because it's not a grant? It's a continuing grant. Because it looks like there's no time limit on to it, they can come back year after year after year. So I think that process has to be looked into, so that it makes it easier for the team and easier for council when it comes up for debate.
Counselor McDonald?
Can we refer this to a discussion session? Future discussion session, the, the actual process itself?
Yes, that, that absolutely is, yeah, that's on the list.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it, yes.
These are, you know, these are all new initiatives, they're all great projects, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I think perhaps the plea via the camera is that maybe the municipality of District of Lunenburg re-looks at this and, and does ante up our, their equivalent share, perhaps, as, as the municipality of District of Chester has. So I fully support the, the motion, and, yeah, that's it.
Question? Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. It's, we, we could have a council meeting that is three hours long to just talk about fair and equitable funding around the region. We could, it's a struggle we have, pick an item, LCLC skate park, whatever it is, right? And it's, it's not going away, and we have to have this discussion. Counselor Graves, I appreciate your comments. Our last item of business here is Visitor Information Center sublease. So, talking about the Information Center out at Exit 11, that we are partners in, and there's a motion in your package, does someone like to make that motion? Oh, the motion, right, we referred that back, and we had questions about square footage costs. Did everyone have their questions answered? Does anyone have any more questions? So we actually already have a motion on the floor. Do you need someone to reread the motion? Or do we have, we have a movement? If, yes, please.
The Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff and approved the execution of a lease for the use of space at the Visitor Information Center at Long Conex with Emily Suzanne Lois Crum.
All right, and that was moved by Counselor McDonald and seconded by Counselor Graves. Yes. So any further discussion? Question? Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. There are no items of new business coming forward, council? So without anything else, motion to adjourn? Deputy Mayor Tanner and Counselor Graves, we are adjourned. We have a short in-camera meeting, we'll have the personnel item in the next room.